It is May 5th, 2020. I'd like to welcome you to the May 5th School Board Meeting of Lexington School District 1, and we are pleased to be here. I would like to call to order the meeting. It is now 6:05. And before we enter into executive session, I want to remind everyone that Board Member Jada Garrus has submitted a statement of recusal dated December 4th, 2018, thereby abstaining herself of all votes, deliberations, and other actions on the following matter: Jada Garrus individually and on behalf of all others similarly situated versus Lexington County School District 1, case number 2017 CP 3204435. The recusal states that the reason for the disqualification is this Ms. Garrus is a litigant in the above-mentioned matter who possesses a financial interest in its outcome. Therefore, Ms. Garrus will not be present during this portion of the executive session when we discuss the legal matter. Do I hear a motion to enter into executive session to consider employment recommendations for 2020, 2021, discuss a property contractual matter related to a bus transportation facility, and to receive legal advice on pending claims and other matters covered by attorney-client privilege? Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. I have a motion from Mr. Anderson. Mr. Anderson, would you mind restating the three things? Or we'll let Brent have it. Yes, Mr. Secretary, will you restate that, please?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move to enter executive session to consider employment recommendations for 2020, 2021, discuss a property contractual matter related to a bus transportation facility, and to receive legal advice on pending claims and other matters covered by attorney-client privilege.
Thank you. We now have a motion on the floor from Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. All in favor, if you'll please raise your right hand. Okay, the motion carries and it is unanimous, and we are now in executive session. Thank you. Okay, it is May 1st, I mean, excuse me, May 5th, 2020, and I would like to welcome you to the board meeting for the Lexington School District 1 Board of Trustees. At this time, I'd like to hear a motion to adjourn executive session and to begin open session. Do I have a motion?
The move.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Oswald. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. And the motion carries and it is unanimous. Thank you. I would like to call to order the general session of May 5th, 2020 board meeting. We are meeting tonight in compliance with the Governor's orders and CDC recommendations. The board will allow no more than 10 people in the auditorium at one time. The auditorium has been thoroughly cleaned and sanitized before the meeting and will be after the meeting as well. Any board member attending in person will take part in social distancing by maintaining a safe social distance from any other board members or any other members present at this meeting. All board members, employees, or other individuals attending the meeting in person are encouraged to wear a face covering at all times. Due to the Governor's restriction on public gatherings related to COVID-19, the public is encouraged to watch the meeting on our YouTube channel. After the meeting, the district will follow its previously established process by posting a video of the meeting to the district's YouTube channel, Lex One video site, and our own website. Individuals coming to the meeting in person are also encouraged to wear a mask and to observe all the guidelines set forth by the Governor's Office and by CDC. They will go to the staff development room, which is the overflow room, where they will observe social distancing guidelines. Individuals who have come to speak during citizens' participation will also wait there until it is their time to talk. The district will place a lectern at the back of the auditorium for the speaker. A district employee will sanitize the microphone after each speaker. I would like to let you know that the district is in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act and that we have notified the media of the date, time, and place of this meeting. The district is also taping this meeting for accuracy and preparing the minutes. At this time, I'd like to call on Ms. Amory Green for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Green?
Heavenly Father, we know that everything is in Your sovereign control. We ask that You keep the coronavirus from continuing to spread. Be with our local, state, and national leaders and decision-makers. May truth and empathy guide the people saying policies for our protection and that affect the lives and futures of our families and communities. Take away the fear, anxiety, and feelings of isolation from people receiving treatment who are under quarantine, and protect others from exposure to the virus, especially those who are more likely than others to become severely ill. Renew and sustain our healthcare workers. Bring your protection upon them as they work with patients. Multiply their supplies so they have the protective items needed to stay safe on their jobs. Inspire and invigorate the research doctors developing better tests to diagnose the virus, create vaccines to prevent it, and identify protocols to eliminate the disease's spread. Provide comfort and help for business owners and families facing financial stress. Give our students grit and determination to work hard to finish the school year strong. Prompt worn-out parents to speak words of kindness and encouragement to their children. Bless our teachers, bus drivers, food service workers, and administrators who have demonstrated their love for and commitment to our students through their actions and efforts day in and day out. Thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to serve and be a part of Lexington School District 1. Make us ever mindful of Your love, protection, and blessings. Amen. And if you would, please stand with me, and we will do the pledge. Oh, sorry, I guess that was good enough.
Okay.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Green. That was really nice. Appreciate those good thoughts there. At this time, we will move to 5.0 on our agenda, which is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
The move.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions or comments, Board? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, any opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, that is unanimous, and we now have an agenda. Board, you have 6.0, which are reports and action items from executive session. Do I hear a motion to approve 28 certified recommendations for the 2020-2021 school year?
Madam Chair, I move the board accept Dr. Little and senior leadership team's recommendation for 28 certified recommendations for the 2020-2021 school year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. We now have a motion on the floor for the 28 certified positions. Do I have a second? Okay, thank you, Mr. Oswald. Are there any questions or comments, Board? Okay, hearing none, if you'll raise your hand, we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving the 28 certified recommendations, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. Motion carries and it is unanimous. Do I have a second motion for the administrative positions?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the six administrative recommendations as put forward by Dr. Little and the senior leadership team.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. We now have a motion for six administrative recommendations for the 2020-2021 school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Dr. Powers, second by Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions or comments, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. If you'll raise your hand, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries and it is unanimous. Board, we did have a contractual matter that we discussed in executive session. Do I hear a motion to approve the contractual matter?
Madam Chair, in regards to the legal action Garrus versus Lexington County School District 1...
Excuse me, this is the...
That's not that contractual matter. Okay, my apologies.
No, that's okay. This is the land contractual.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Madam Chair, I move the board authorize the administration to amend the option agreements related to the two parcels known by Lexington County as TMS #005498-07014, containing approximately 44.27 acres with Royalty Holdings I LLC and TMS #005498-07-015, containing approximately 2.61 acres with Royalty Properties LLC, for the purpose of relocating the district transportation facility by adding Exhibit B, which establishes the purchase price of $1,560,000 or $32,000 per acre.
Okay, we now have a motion on the floor from Mr. Oswald. Do I have a second? Okay, and we now have a second from Ms. Green. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Salters, and we'll get an update, and then we'll open it up for questions, Board.
We can't hear him.
I got it. I'm unmuted. Okay, here we go. Can you put it in presentation mode or no? Okay. Hopefully, everyone can see that on their screens now. And this is, again, a conversation we've had for a number of months now. The original option was signed back in February, as you authorized that. And tonight, we are, I guess, excuse me, at our last meeting, we talked about the price of this property and the appraisals, and tonight, I'm just revisiting that same presentation. Just to recap what we're doing here, the facility study committee, a number of years ago, leading up to our 2018 bond referendum, gave some recommendations to relocate our bus transportation facility that currently is located on Bar Road, and it serves Lexington High School and River Bluff. And so, by relocating to a more central location, we will be able to serve White Knoll, River Bluff, and Lexington. And you can see the distances approximately from this property to those three high schools and subsequent attendance areas that they will serve. Obviously, when looking for this property in an industrial area, it's preferred because of the nature of the business that we do, starting buses early in the morning, having them out on the roads, and arriving late back in the evenings as well. We need good sightlines and multiple access points, preferably, in this case, have separate driveways for buses and employees. And this property that we're looking at meets some of that. This is a shot of the current location here on Bar Road, and this property is actually leased from the State Department of Education and has been that type of arrangement for many, many years. And this is a kind of a zoomed-in shot of that. Co-located here is the Lexington County Bus Maintenance Facility that the state also runs to help maintain and support the state-owned bus fleet. And so, the property that we're looking at and proposing this price on this evening is located adjacent to I-20. It fronts Two Notch Road. The large interchange there would be South Lake Drive leading out towards the White Knoll community there at I-20. And taking a closer look at the property, you can see that it butts up against on the rear side of I-20, which gives us some pretty good security from that standpoint. And then, we have multiple access points to create driveways with frontages on Two Notch Road. There's, looking at the topography of the land, it lays pretty well. It slopes kind of right to left. There is a kind of a draw in the middle of the property, and there's a small pond there now, which we would make use of as part of our storm detention operation, which we would have a large amount of paving on this site as a result of hard surfaces for parking the buses. And here's a shot of that wetland area, is approximately 2 and 1/2 acres, or 5.3% of the overall site. And site development, initial site development look, the building, the training facilities, the parking, the maintenance bays and all that would be located in the kind of the upper portion of the site, where you see that bare land area. It's already pretty level. And we would have a training facility for our bus drivers as part of this building and some office space. It would be modeled similarly to our operations facility now in layout. And again, this is just a shot of kind of the general overall orientation of the property. As I mentioned earlier, and as spoken in the motion, we did do two independent appraisals to come up with this price, and, you know, those are how we got to this point. So, we're recommending this this evening. We will, just to recap the process, we will, should the board act on this motion, we would sign Exhibit B and confirm that with the seller. They would sign it. And then, we would continue our due diligence process and ensure that all the other site needs are met. Once that process is completed, we would then bring a motion back to the board for a recommendation to close the property and do a final purchase arrangement at that point. So, we still have a lot of work left to do, should the board act on this this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
Board, do we have any questions? Does anybody have a question for Mr. Salters or a comment?
I just have some discussion about the motion in general. Originally, we were told we needed between 15 and 20 acres. We're now looking at 44 acres and an additional 2.61 acres. And first of all, we don't need that much land. But secondly, for the 2.61 acres, we are buying a bar and a house, which is not needed because we already have enough entrances. So, I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay, Mr. Salters, did you want to comment on that?
Sure, I'll be happy to. We are looking at the additional... First of all, we are, the area that we're looking for property, we, you know, a lot of times, we have to buy property that is available to us and not just a certain slice of land that, you know, maybe we want a certain amount, and that certain amount isn't always on the market or available for sale. And so, we work with what's out there. And in some cases, you know, that may be a little bit larger, or it may be a little bit smaller. In this case, we're very comfortable with the size of this property because it gives us room for growth. I mean, I look at this building that we're in right now. It was built in the 90s, and we thought at that time, we would never have the need for any additional space. And then, we've acquired properties across the street to try to make room for additional office space as we were landlocked here. So, it never hurts to have a little bit of extra space in an area. And then, as far as the additional access, those buildings that are on the site are of no value and really were not considered as part of the appraisal because they're not valuable property. Basically, they'll be torn down, and we're not considered as part of the appraisal. They are going to be removed from the site. And the additional access does provide us better sightlines. It does give us an additional entrance with broader road frontage, so that will help with our site layout.
Any other questions or comments, Board? Mr. Salters, didn't you mention at one point in time, one of the, another piece of property that was under consideration was smaller in acreage, but actually was a comparable price to what we are considering for this piece of property?
Yes, Ms. Green, there was another piece of property in the area, actually, that had frontage on South Lake and frontage on Two Notch that was smaller, but was a considerable amount more per acre in their offering.
I know you said that there was, this appraisal didn't add any value because of the other land. We are actually signing a separate option agreement for the 2.61 acres. That includes the bar and a house. So, it's not like this is just a couple of acres that are included in that. We actually have two separate agreements here. So, we are agreeing to about 44 some odd acres, and then, an additional 2.61 acres with a bar and a house.
You are correct. And what I mean by that, what you see is that those pieces of property were appraised at the same per acre price. So, if your, I guess, if your statement were to be valid, you would have that particular parcel of 2 point, you know, so odd acres be much more per acre, and it's not. It's the same value, $32,000 an acre. That $32,000 is applied across the board. So, those improvements that are on that property bring no additional value to the property.
Correct. And I know the appraisal said it would actually cost around $25,000 to demolish those structures. But my whole point is, we don't, first of all, we don't need 44 acres. We're currently using 7.58 acres right now, and we definitely don't need an additional 2.61 acres with a house and a bar. That's going to cost us money to demolish that.
Then, would you suggest that we buy it, Ms. Garrus, after it goes up?
Let me clarify something real quick. We're actually using a portion of the acreage at the Bar Road facility, but that's only the River Bluff and Lexington buses. We're also using White Knoll High School, a large parking area there for the White Knoll buses, which will be consolidated on this property. Neither one of those facilities has an adequate bus maintenance operation, bus cleaning operation, and training facility and office space for our bus personnel. Neither one of those facilities also, well, actually, the White Knoll facility does include storm drainage because it is on that, on our site there. But the Bar Road facility does not include any storm detention. So, and I'm sure you've been by there, Ms. Garrus, and you've seen, after it rains, it floods, and you can't get in those buses in the back. So, you do need additional property to accommodate the new building codes that are out there. So, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Anderson. Go ahead.
That's all right. And doesn't that also include where the bar of Lexington is right now? Doesn't that include where we're going to have an entrance?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Salters, I'm sorry, I have another question. The building plan, bond referendum that the voters approved in 2018, this transportation facility was part of that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And as part of that facility's needs, there was kind of a breakdown of expected costs associated with property and things like that. Is this piece of property within that projection?
So, let me clarify, in the facility study, there was a budget for the facility. There was not a breakdown of land versus building.
Right, right.
Okay, so, there was an overall, I think, $3 million, and I'm using round numbers, $3 million or so in the facility study for a transportation facility. And in all those facility numbers, there's the option, if you will, to, if, you know, if the budget allows, to fund that land through that number. But it doesn't necessarily limit you to that money for land acquisition.
I got you, I got you. Okay, thank you.
So, in other words, the prices that were listed in the facility study, those don't even include land. So, the $3 million for the transportation facility is just for the building. It's not for the $1.5 million for land.
That is a site development cost for that facility. And so, they have really no way, the facility study, when it was developed, had really no way to put a value on the land. And so, they would, you know, they included some small placeholders for the new facilities, but they didn't have a way to know where the district was going to buy land. So, it was really not practical to include, you know, anything in there of any significance for land. Because just as an example, this is a good example, the Lexington Middle School land, you know, and then, the current piece of land that we're still looking for, the River Bluff area elementary school land. As those areas, the land comes in very short supply, the market drives the cost. The development of the facility study, they really didn't have a way to know where we would end up with price on those.
So, at the end of the day, the facility study does not include the price of land?
If you can fit it in that budget, that's great. But if not, then we have other sources of capital funds to be able to do that.
So, how many buses will this particular site serve?
Well, initially, and I might, Mr. Caldwell might have a better number, but I think initially, it's probably around 130 or so, or 140 buses. You know, we'll have a large volume of activity buses. I see him nodding his head, so that's...
That's right, about 140.
And so, you know, of course, as the schools grow and as we add schools in these areas, we'll end up adding more routes and more buses to the fleet.
So, how many buses would you say, over the last five years, three years, however many, have we added to the regular route buses, not activity buses or district buses?
I'll let Mr. Caldwell jump in on that one.
I don't have the exact number, but I'm not sure there's been any added up until recently with, I think we were given 11 additional buses. They're not brand-new buses, but they were additions to our fleet. Some of those buses went to Kershaw County because right after we got the, we got the buses, they were hit with a tornado, and it destroyed their fleet. And I think we've gotten four of those of the 11 that I think there were allotted to get.
Thank you. I just knew we hadn't grown a lot. Also, I know that, and I keep hearing rumors that Gilbert's going to be included. Dr. Little has assured me that it's not. Either way, that what we have at Gilbert is not a long-term solution. So, another concern I have is that all of those buses that are parked in the middle of the football stadium and have to move every time we have a big game, that we're either going to have to build something for them or move them over to this facility. And that's a pretty good distance for Gilbert drivers to drive if they were to move over to this facility.
I think you bring up a valid concern, Ms. Garrus, and as a part of the facility study, the needs were prioritized with the transportation offices. Of course, Gilbert has an office that was built there at the high school and co-located the parking lot there. Actually, you may or may not remember, but that parking lot was dirt for a long time. And the reason or the thinking about relocating to that facility was it allowed for kind of a multi-use pavement operation. So, the district was able to pave that lot with high resistance asphalt, and it serves multiple purposes because of the football stadium being adjacent to that and the other sports activities there. So, there were some kind of shared costs in that endeavor to be able to do that. But it's not fenced. But it's not fenced, um, you know, like this facility would be. And so there's some improvements that, um, need to be made long-term there. But that, that was prioritized, um, kind of behind the, the, the Bar Road facility. Um, as I'm sure you're aware, they're in some pretty old dilapidated portables that have, um, been around since the seventies. And that's what they're functioning in is their office spaces and, and training facilities. So they're very, very much inadequate.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments, board? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Oswald made the motion, Ms. Green seconded it. This is just to set the price for these two parcels of land, one for Royal Holdings One LLC, the other for Royal Properties LLC. At this point, once the price is set, um, we are basically given permission to Mr. Salters and his group to begin the due diligence on that property. So let's take a vote. All in favor of this motion, please raise your hand, please. Okay, that's one, two, three, four, five, six. Six in favor, any opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, we have one opposed, Ms. Garrus. Okay, the motion passes, six to one. We will now move to the legal matter. Um, can everyone hear me okay? Okay. The Board of Trustees received legal advice during executive session. Board member Jada Garrus has submitted a statement of recusal dated December 4th, 2018, thereby abstaining herself of all votes, deliberations, and other action on the following matter. Jada Garrus individually and on behalf of all others similarly situated versus Lexington County School District One, case number 2017 dash CP dash 32 dash 04435. Excuse me. The recusal states the reason for the disqualification is that Ms. Garrus is a litigant in the above mentioned matter who possesses a financial interest in its outcome. Ms. Garrus was not part of this discussion in executive session, nor will she be voting on this matter. Board members, do I hear a motion regarding, uh, the discussion from legal counsel? Do I hear a motion regarding this discussion?
Madam Chair, in regards to the legal action Garrus versus Lexington County School District One, I move that we authorize the district's attorneys to file an appeal on behalf of Lexington County School District One concerning the attorney's fees award in this case.
We have a motion from Mr. Anderson, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Dr. Powers. Board, are there any questions or comments before we take a vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. If you'll raise your hand, all in favor of seeking the appeal as, uh, per the motion from Mr. Anderson, please raise your hand. Three, four, five, so we have five. Do we have any opposed? And we have one opposed, so five in favor, one opposed, Dr. Guyton is opposed. The motion carries and we will instruct our legal team to, to, uh, seek the appeal. At this time, we're now going to move to citizens' participation. Um, Mayor Beth, do we have anyone here that wishes to speak to the board? Okay, we'll skip over that. And I would like to remind our, uh, the community that if you don't, uh, feel comfortable coming up here, uh, all the board members have their emails, telephone, uh, numbers, their, uh, uh, their home addresses. If you would like to communicate with us, that way we welcome your input as always. So, uh, or you're more than welcome to come up here and address the board. We are now going to go to 8.0, which is an action item, and it's 8.1. And this is changes to the 2019-2020 academic calendar. I'm going to get a motion on the floor in, um, in a second, and then we'll turn it over to Dr. Tally to walk us through the motion. Do I hear a motion to amend the 2019-2020 academic calendar?
Madam Chair, I, uh, move that we change the 2019-2020 academic calendar to move the last day of school for students from June 4th, 2020 to May 29th, 2020.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Anderson, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Oswald. And at this time, we're going to turn it over to Dr. Tally, who will walk us through this decision and, um, see what crystal ball she can look into to see what we're going to have in the future. So, Dr. Tally?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I, I wish I did have a crystal ball, you know, I don't. But I can, uh, talk with you, uh, in retrospect of what we've been through as a school district and as a, and as a country and a nation. Uh, as you know, Lexington One began preparing for, um, e-learning when the governor gave the executive order that schools would be closed for 14 days. That began on March, uh, 16th through the 31st. As a school district, we immediately began transitioning from a brick and mortar mode of teaching to a mode of, uh, learning that included instructional learning packets for pre-K through tw- through five and e-learning for grade six through 12. Uh, on March 19th, we, we launched e-learning and we distributed learning packets for the elementary schools. Then we began phase two of that same mode of learning on April 14th through April 30th. And yesterday, we launched phase three with, uh, beginning to, uh, distribute, uh, more learning packets for, for elementary schools and continuing with our e-learning in high schools. The 1920 academic calendar shows that the last day of school for our students is June 4th. Per board policy, if we change that calendar, the board has to, um, take action on that. So I am requesting that the board tonight amend the calendar so that the last day of school for students is May the 29th. And you might ask, why would I ask you to do that? This will give, uh, schools, as you know, the 25th is a holiday. This will give schools four days to focus that last week of school on our students' mental wellness, our teachers' mental wellness, uh, virtual activities that, that will ceremoniously bring a closure to the school year. And to also celebrate, um, our teachers for the good work they have done, our principals and administrators for the good work they have done. And certainly to celebrate together as a school family, a most unusual year. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Dr. Tally, do we still meet the state's recommendations for the minimum number of school days?
Actually, um, the, the state superintendent has waived that. So we're in good shape there, that's a great question, Mr. Anderson.
Any other questions or comments, board? Um, Dr. Guyton, Ms. Garrus, anything? Okay. So, uh, we have a motion on the floor to amend the 2019-2020 academic calendar. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, anybody opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. At this time, we're going to turn it over to 9.0, which are reports. Um, there is no action at this time. We're going to turn it over to 9.1, which is a report from, uh, Dr. Greg Little, our superintendent. So, Dr. Little?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would like to, we're going to kind of throw a slight curve ball at you since Dr. Tally's already standing at the podium. Um, I'm going to go ahead and have her go over her, uh, end of the year update. That way, we're not redoing the mics and everything associated with that when we're cleaning the mics for Mr. Basket and, and others. So if you don't mind, uh, Dr. Tally, if you would go ahead and, um, just give us a, a bit of your end of year instructional update.
Sure, tha- thank you, Dr. Little, be happy to. Uh, I think the, the board is aware, um, that we did send out communication last week to our families about, uh, school closures and, and, uh, ending dates. You know that seniors' last day will be May 15th. Uh, and there's been lots of planning, uh, taking place from lots of people relative to, um, the celebration for those seniors. The last week of school, teachers will spend that time working on cumulative folders. Uh, they'll work with parents for any missing materials that there, that may still be out there. Uh, we'll also be working with incompletes for, for students. Um, we'll also be doing professional learning, obviously remotely that week. Um, and this is also a time where our teachers will be able to, um, inform their, their principals and assistant principals, their leadership teams, um, what we need to do relative to, uh, when we do come back. You mentioned a crystal ball. We, we've all been working with the State Department and, and getting guidance from them as they've been working, uh, with all's, uh, school districts. We don't know what that looks like just yet, but that will give us our school leaders some time to, uh, get some reflections from their teachers, to get some input from that as they begin working with their grade level teams to, uh, get ready for academic, um, academics for next year. Also, we'll be looking at academic data, we'll be looking at behavioral data. Uh, I'm sure you know that there'll be a lot of, uh, we are anticipating a lot of social emotional needs for our students when they do come back. So there's a lot going on that week. Um, so just a lot going on, a lot of unknowns. But I, I would like to take a point of personal privilege and just say that I'm so proud of our school district, our principals, our assistant principals, our teachers, our, uh, instructional coaches. Everyone has worked, uh, they've stepped up to the plate, and, uh, I just couldn't be more proud of them and that work. So if you see a teacher this week, it is National Teacher Appreciation Week, please thank them for their work. Thank you, Dr. Little.
All right, thank you, Dr. Tally. Um, so I would like to give a quick update, well, it's not a, I don't know if it's a quick update or not, but certainly an, an update. So not only have we been working on, um, not only have we been working on, um, the instructional side of the house when it comes to the month of May, but as you know, this has been an incredibly challenging time for our seniors. I, I, I think this board probably can appreciate that, uh, maybe more than anybody, um, with, uh, Ms. Garrus and Dr. Powers and, and, uh, and Marie, Ms. Green, uh, with all seniors. And so you, you live with this every single day. And so we have worked really hard over the month of May to, uh, plan and create opportunities for our seniors to celebrate their work, to celebrate their energy, to celebrate their achievement, and to recognize and mark this momentous occasion in their lives. And to be able to do that i- in a time of social distancing, it's taken quite a bit of creativity. And, um, and that, but we, we've, uh, done a lot of work with that. Um, I do want to sort of start from the end of my presentation and I'll work my way back. I don't want to bury the lead too much. But we did create a task force that really brought together the people, uh, at each high school, uh, that, that were the real creative. Um, I guess I can say that I'm no longer part of that, that young crowd. But, you know, we have some of those young, uh, assistant principals. One of them is in the, will be presenting here in the next few minutes. That have lots of great creative ideas about how they can celebrate our young people. And, uh, some great examples of that today. I know, uh, signs will be rolling out, yard signs have been going out this week. Um, I saw a couple of Lexington High School, Gilbert High School, and River Bluff High School signs already out. Uh, so those signs will be rolling out over the next week or so, uh, to celebrate our seniors. Uh, social media frames have also rolled out where, uh, people can talk about their senior and, and, and brag on them that way as well. So we, we've got a lot of things happening over the month of May. I do want to point out one, uh, important day is that, um, we're going to celebrate, a, a lot of that celebration is going to come, um, through the week of May 18th. And, um, really the plans are pretty consistent across the board and, and the, real, the big day of May 18th would be 5/20/20 at 8/20 because that's the military time for 2020. Um, I did not know that, someone else came up with that idea. Um, and, uh, we actually collaborated with our other districts here in Lexington to, uh, do that as a countywide event. And so we're excited about that and, um, but I, I do appreciate our communications team. I think that, that originated with us and, um, it's exciting to, to get a lot of energy around, uh, that celebration. So that's going to be a, a big week of celebrations.
What is that event called? I don't, did you call them?
It's going to be, uh, Glow for Grads. And so we're going to turn the lights on, we're going to have people driving through campus, we're going to have, uh, things taking place throughout the entire week, uh, the entire week, uh, I, events and things taking place at the school, uh, obviously socially distanced and all that kind of stuff. And at the same time, that night will culminate, um, in some pretty big activities. I think there are also, there, there may be senior athletes being, uh, recognized that week as well. And, uh, because, you know, lots of people didn't get to have their senior night either, we're, we're going to do a senior night. Uh, some schools may be doing that the same night, it may be different, but they're going to.
Ms. Hill, aren't we asking, um, community homes to turn on their lights too? Like everything, we want the whole county lit up, right?
We're asking businesses, the county, um, it's being, every district is circulating the information. Harrison Cahill at the county has it, who's the public information officer for the county. So, um, we are, we're circulating that information everywhere and asking anyone and everyone who has a light of any kind to participate.
So we're excited, and, and I think it's exciting to get the business involved because we are a community. This is a community of learners, uh, we're, we're not, we don't exist in a vacuum. And so it's nice to get our, our community involved. So that, those are some big celebration stuff. So I, I didn't want to bury the lead.
Can I ask one thing about the Glow Night? We need to like make sure somebody's tuned into one of the satellites that'll get like a.
Oh, maybe, yeah.
Like a space image of Lexington County illuminated. Um, it might be cool to see that from space.
That'd be cool. All right, maybe we'll look into that. You have, you have a, uh, NSA, uh, security clearance or something we need to know about?
Hang on, I'll text on that.
Okay.
Tim Miles will get right on that.
So as, as you can imagine, there have been lots of, uh, lots of excitement, um, lots of trepidation, um, about graduation and about the need to be able to celebrate our seniors in a way that, uh, again, recognizes their accomplishments and hard work. But also at the same time, um, we're living in a new reality and are working through what it means to be socially distant and to be socially responsible with that type of event. Because we have, um, we have quarantined ourselves for some time and, and we want to make sure that we're acting in a responsible manner, um, for that. Uh, because I think we, we owe that to our community, we owe that to our families, we owe that to our students, to try to do both of those things. Uh, we surveyed our seniors, um, and, uh, really overwhelmingly the theme to that, you know, we purposely made that survey open-ended because we didn't want to limit the number of choices that people had. We really wanted to open it up. Uh, one of the themes that really jumped out from that survey is that the class wanted to do something together. They wanted to do something as a class. Um, and, you know, there are lots of ideas associated with that, but that was one of the big things that we took away from that and said, if we are going to celebrate graduation, we want to make sure that our kids can do it together. The, these young people, uh, can celebrate that together. Uh, I know there was a statewide call recently and students in that statewide call expressed very similar feelings that, uh, really some of these other, uh, some of these other celebrations, and our student advisory council actually mentioned that, is that some of those other celebrations were fantastic, but if they couldn't really do something together, um, I, I think it, I, I think from their end, it really diminished the, the, the overall celebration. So, uh, we have discussed this ceremony at length. Uh, we have walked through a number of scenarios. Um, but our goal, and I want to be clear about this, our goal was to create the most authentic experience possible while also working to protect the people who are attending the event and to protect our community at large. So before we go forward, I just want to be clear about that. An authentic experience while that also protects the people at the event and the community at large. So as a result of all of this conversation and work, uh, we are going to have a modified commencement ceremony for each high school. And it will take place in each school's football stadium. We will livestream these 8:00 AM ceremonies. Every ceremony will begin at 8:00 AM on a different date. Uh, but we're going to livestream the events for the graduates' families. And e- and in order for that to happen, each graduate will receive two admission tickets. Uh, so we are going to limit, uh, the number of people who can attend. But, um, we will not only livestream the event, we will actually post, uh, and capture it on our website later. And we are also going to mail each graduate a DVD of the event. So we, we, we think that'll be a nice keepsake for them. Um, all participants and guests, um, we're going to, um, you know, our focus is going to be strict social distancing guidelines and, and how that looks on May the 27th, when these kick off. That's what we're going to work on. That will involve masks, it will involve, you know, specific points of entry. It's going to involve, um, you know, uh, hand sanitizer, temperature checks, um, all of those things. The best practices associated with keeping people safe. Uh, we're going to have assigned seating. Um, and we're going to work through that process and the seats will be six, you know, a 36 square foot. So we'll keep people separate. And we will be utilizing, uh, you know, as we've looked at the, the solutions for this, we will be utilizing a, a, a lot of the square footage of that place. Um, but we do believe that the. Um, but we do believe that the students, it's important to recognize our students. They will cross the stage and there's traditional caps and gowns, honor stalls, all those things, the cords and what that looks like. We're going to have a videographer to capture that walk, uh, to really up close and personal. So if you're looking at it at home, you're actually going to have a better seat in the house than you would what you, what we normally have at the Colonial Life Center, uh, or arena. Um, when we do it traditionally. But at the conclusion of the ceremony, we'll be working and, and really working with our staff. And to, to, so we're going to stage people in and we'll stage people out to try to keep them as safe as possible. Um, and, uh, and that's the kind of stuff that we're working on. Uh, again, we're doing a lot of things the week before at that senior week. So the picture that gets made. We'll have an opportunity for the, uh, student and their family to get a picture when they're capping gown. Where they're going to have that, you know, at the school, kind of in an iconic place at the school on the football stadium. It depends on kind of each school by school. But we'll be able to have that graduation picture the week before and then, uh, and then we'll be working through. So here's the, here's the schedule. Uh, Pillion High School will graduate on the 27th, uh, of May. Gilbert High School will take place May 28th. Uh, White Noe High School will take place Friday, May 29th. And then the following week, Monday, the first will be Lexington High School and Wednesday, the third will be River Bluff. All of these ceremonies are going to take place at eight AM. Um, and at the same time, we'll have some weather makeup days just in case. So this is an all or nothing event. We will not have an indoor, we will not have an indoor option. Uh, we are going to try to do it as we can. Uh, and so we have a number of days built in. It's why, it's why we're, we're moving it to the 27th. So we can have plenty of time to make way for weather. Now hopefully we'll have the gorgeous weather that we've had, uh, for the last month. But of course, as you know, what will happen in Murphy's Law, it'll rain every day. But so we, we've got some, we've got some options for that as well. So, um, I'm certainly, uh, able to a- answer any questions you may have about it or have someone here be able to do that. But, um, this, this is the result of a lot of energy and effort. And I think when we come back to our goal, an authentic experience that also protects our community, I think we've achieved, um, that outcome.
Well, Dr. Little, as a mother of a senior that has been, um, just a ray of sunshine at my house through all of this. Um, I, I know how much work you and your staff and the school level administrators have put into this. Um, and I can echo what you heard from the students. Um, no matter what I've mentioned to her about a possible graduation ceremony, if it didn't, um, include her whole class and look like what she imagined graduation was, was going to look like, it, it wasn't acceptable. Um, and I really feel like y'all have massaged this and talked about it and figured out the best, given the circumstances, the best way to make this happen. Um, and I'm, I'm delighted that the classes are going to get to do this together. Because all of us that are, you know, well past high school graduation, you look back and you realize that, you know, graduation is the last time you'll see some of those people. But you know, you may be very close to them now, but even six months from now, um, when you're, have started college and you've gone, or you're in the military or you're in the workplace and you've gone on to the next phase of your life, the high school, um, stuff kind of falls away. Um, but it's so important for these kids to get this experience and get this memory. Um, and celebrate that they've been together for 13 years and they've been, they've been through a lot, especially the last six weeks. Um, and so the fact that y'all have worked so hard to give them, um, something that I think is really going to be special. Um, I just really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And kudos to the, uh, the fact that you included the students in all of this decision-making too. I know for some of the districts, that did not work out so well. They forgot to do that. So good job, sir.
So if there is nothing else, we will, we will move on. So we are going to have an exciting month of, of, um, of, uh, celebrations. So board, I need you to do me a favor. Um, I need you to alert Cheryl, um, as soon as possible about which of these graduations you will be able to attend. Again, recognizing that these now are over five days. Um, and I know many of you have very busy schedules, so I, I certainly understand if you can't make all five of them. But, uh, we do need to know, uh, we do need to get some, uh, clarification of whether or not you're going to be there. Cause, uh, we begin the logistical planning of the chairs and everything else tomorrow. And, and we need to make sure that we account for every single chair that's going to be had. Um, so if you would please, uh, at your earliest convenience and by earliest convenience, if that could be tomorrow, we would greatly appreciate it. Uh, just alert Cheryl of whether or not which graduations, uh, your schedule will allow you to attend. So now I know that was exciting, uh, but I am thrilled about what's getting ready to be presented. Um, if you recall earlier this year, uh, we, uh, before we were quarantined, we talked about, uh, creating the college center at Gilbert High School. And that college center has continued to be planned despite the, um, despite the quarantine. And since those initial presentations, as you also know, we've, uh, we now have a leader for that center. And, uh, he has been hard at work. And I don't want to, can I spoiler alert it real quick? We have a cohort who will start in the fall. Um, of our, uh, our inaugural, um, our inaugural cohort for the college center at Gilbert High School. And we could not be more pleased and we could not be more proud. So, um, without stepping on any more thunder or stealing toes or whatever the metaphors may be, uh, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Basket and he's going to walk us through where we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Little. We'll share the screen in just a second so I can give you an update. Um, can you also hear me okay?
All right, David Rhimes, yeah.
I don't know if they want to be remembered that way, but we'll, we'll see if it works. Thank you. Alright, so when I'm excited to give you an update today on the work that's been done over the past, uh, almost three months. Um, I was named in middle, the middle of February and then we've been working since, uh, to get everything ready for the 2021 school year. I want to start by thanking the communications department and the graphic designers for collaborating with me to create a design that we felt really, that I felt symbolized what I'm looking for in this program. And that's to be able to bridge the opportunity gap for students who, especially those who are, uh, underprivileged, those who will be first generation college students. So to me, that represents a bridge coming together. And that we are helping students on their journey to transition from high school to becoming successful college students on the other side. And you'll also see the college center abbreviated, uh, at times as TCC. So I wanted to make sure I made that known as well. Talking about phase one, so we began in February, or I began in February to start visiting middle schools. So out of the eight middle schools through March, we were able to physically visit seven of the eight middle schools. Uh, we were not able to visit White Noe Middle School before we were out of school for the virus. So we had a, I had a Zoom meeting with White Noe Middle School and their administrators. Next, I received about a hundred and fifty recommendations for, uh, student recommendations from teachers and school councils from those eight middle schools. So we started with that list, those who met the criteria, uh, the student who's pretty much the, the average student. That's in that 40th percentile for the state test on E-L-A and math. So we started there. And also the program that we're using, AVID, AVID stands for advancement via individual determination. They have a core set of principals, so we use their materials also to identify students who best fit, uh, this program. Uh, Mr. Poole and I, uh, we visited the early college high school in Charleston, South Carolina to get an idea of another school that's local enough that we can, uh, pick their brain, get some ideas on how they started their first cohort. They were in, uh, the third year and, uh, we got some great information from that school. So I was excited to be able to do that in February. So phase two, we started recruitment and selection. Once we got the recommendations from the middle schools. This was as of last week. So you'll note that most of the recommend, or most of the applications that came in, even though we, they, we received a hundred and fifty recommendations. It has been a challenge to get applications turned in. For one, uh, some students have internet access issues. Uh, so we have asked the counselors and I've called myself as well and some of the administrators to, uh, remind parents that, hey, your child has been recommended for this program. We think they're a great fit to get those applications turned in, but there were still some challenges that we faced in that as well. Even though we got a, a great number of recommendations. So the majority of the applications came in from Pillion Middle. Uh, we had a total of 23 as of last week and I got one yesterday. So we had 24 total. Uh, we have a capacity this first year of 30 students. So there are still some spots available. And the extra application that came in yesterday, uh, was from Gilbert Middle School. So that would increase that total from seven at Gilbert Middle School to eight. And that will be a total of 24 applicants from our, from the eight middle schools. To share a little bit more about the demographics of the applicants, and this was based on last week and does not include the student who submitted their application this week. Uh, we have a majority of female students who applied for the program. Um, you'll see our racial breakdown, uh, with four African-American students, five Latinx students, and then 14 white students. Of the 23 students that applied as of last week, uh, 12 of those candidates will be first generation college students, meaning that they're, they notified in their, or they indicated in their application. Uh, and parents as well, that they did not, parents did not have education beyond high school. And if they did, maybe they didn't complete college. So these students will be first generation college students. Also, we will be serving, at that time, it was two possible candidates. They have since been accepted. We will be serving two students who are identified as English language learners. So we have a diverse population of students that will be serving in the college in our next school year.
Can you speak real quick? Uh, you said a group of students were identified and then 23 accepted. How big was the identification pool? You just ballparked. Was it a hundred kids? Was it 50 kids?
We received a total of 150 recommendations from teachers and counselors.
I'm sorry, you did tell us that.
Yes, sir. So we, we met with, and thanks for asking that question. We met with eighth grade teachers and counselors at each school, except for White Noe. We didn't get to meet in person. We met virtually, uh, and we talked about the criteria and that included that AVID criteria.
Okay.
They thought these students would be the best fit based on where they were at that time, their progress in their eighth grade year, and also communicating with their parents.
Mr. Basket, um, kind of along that same line, um, the breakdown by the middle schools, I'm kind of surprised to see that there aren't any students like from Carolina Springs. Cause they're an avid school, right?
That's correct.
Um, do you, I mean, that might be some analysis for later on, but have y'all kind of done a dive into why those schools, their students that were recommended didn't seize on that opportunity? I mean, is it communication? Do you have any idea, any theories that that?
Sure. It, it is challenging to, to identify, you know, what the, what happened with that. And, and I think it is also a challenge that we didn't get a chance to speak to students. So we had the opportunity to go speak with adults, that the staff members at the school, but we never got an opportunity to meet with families. So I think that may all have also caused or posed a challenge that we weren't able to speak in front of families. Let them come out in their own communities. So we can have a conversation about what it is. So I think that was the biggest challenge. And, um, even though we, we have 24 applications total, I'm excited about that number. And I, I know for sure that had we been able to go to different schools, we would have had a waiting list for this first year. So I'm really excited about the buzz that's around it. When I talked to the students, we interviewed each student. They were able to tell us what they knew about it. And then they were able to ask us questions about, you know, how it was going to work out for the next year. Uh, and many of them seemed, they were very excited when they got their acceptance notification, uh, via email. And we'll all sell them out physical copies of that package. Thank you for that question. So with students coming from across the district, uh, we do have transportation needs. So we were, uh, in the conversations that I've had with, uh, Mr. Poole. And, uh, I will have with, uh, Mr. Caldwell to get more information. Uh, we are believing that it will be similar to the centers of study that we have at the other high schools where students would perhaps, uh, go to their home school and then be transported from their home school to Gilbert High School for the center, which is a full day program. Students will be there as students for the, their full four-year high school career. And I'll be able to go in individually and, and let, uh, Mr. Caldwell know with Student Services, uh, where we'll need specifically transportation. Uh, primarily the, the majority will come from Pillion Middle School. Of course, students who are at Gilbert Middle School will continue their traditional way of, uh, transportation, whether that be, uh, bus or car. So in phase three, as we begin to implement the college center at Gilbert High School, uh, May through July, we'll be finalizing the 2020, 2021 schedule for TCC at Gilbert High School. That will include honors courses, uh, an English one honors course that will have to be offered in the summer for those who will need it. Some of the accepted students already have completed that course, so they will not need that this summer. Uh, we are working to provide the best opportunity to take that course. And I will communicate with Howard Bissell and, uh, virtual learning to make sure we can get that to happen. And then also we were going to have an onboarding process for accepted students this summer. Uh, we will do that virtually just so they get a chance to see each other, to talk to each other. And, uh, I'm trying to make it as, as, we can't make it as normal as it would have been, but give them an opportunity to at least experience the group coming together before we can again, uh, physically. Each of the teachers that will be assisting in the college center at Gilbert High School will be teachers who are already currently staffed at Gilbert High School. Uh, we will not be bringing in any additional staff. And each of those staff members has to go through AVID training in order for us to be a, a credential AVID, AVID site. So that will take place virtually this summer as well, instead of in person. And we are getting more details within the next few weeks, uh, to get that training underway before the 2020, 2021 school year starts. I wanted to share my personal leadership philosophy. I was reading an article and this came up and I kind of, this is my reflection of the article that I read and I, and I, it states that we are not preparing students for the world that we grew up in. Uh, that world is gone. The world they will create doesn't exist yet. And I firmly believe that. And we've seen it in the last six weeks with the, the world that we've never experienced, that the students have endured. Yeah, the students have endured and the students have been able to, uh, respond to adversity and be resilient, be determined, be persistent, uh, even though it's been very challenging. So this first group is going to be very special. Um, they're going to have an experience that no one else can relate to as far as being involved in going to a new school that you're not even familiar with. And you didn't get to really finish your school year at the school you're leaving as an eighth grader. So, um, uh, we're going to have a great year. I really do believe that. I'm excited about it and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to change lives. I know that as we help students become prepared for college, starting in ninth grade, they're going to begin with that college mindedness. I know for a fact they follow, uh, what the expectations and they, um, really fully immerse themselves in that opport, in the experience that they'll be successful college students once they leave us. Any questions?
Mr. Basket, and I have one. Um, and, uh, thank you for the presentation. It, it actually kind of dovetails to, to your, your final slide there. If we were to back up and, um, say this program were to have started this year. How would it affected the viability this, this last semester? How would it have affected the viability of this program? Is it, is it more virtual in its nature? And so it, it would be almost better designed or? And I know that's a difficult question and, and certainly I, I understand if, if I'm putting you on the spot here. Um, is, I'm just, it's more of a curiosity, I guess.
Sure. That's, that's not a bad question. So what, with the proposed schedule for the college center, students would have been taking their, uh, some honors courses. And they would have taken one AP course. AP courses in many schools are taken in the spring. Uh, otherwise if you take an AP course in the fall, you're not taking exam until late spring. That's a lot. It's a big gap in between learning the curriculum and then being able to apply it. So the AP exams and what College Board has done this spring, I'm also the AP coordinator at Lexington High School as I transitioned between jobs. Uh, they have done, they have created online exams this year. So the material could have continued to be taught through AP Classroom, which is a new software they have in their system. Where they are, their practice test, there are guys, they've been doing AP, uh, live sessions through YouTube. So that, that kind of work could have continued. Uh, and even the work that, you know, the honors classes could have continued just like they are at the other, uh, five high schools so far. Uh, so that, I don't think that would have been much of a difference. Um, except for the fact they won't be able to experience, uh, the, the curriculum together, especially in that first year of the cohort.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then remind me, I know you've provided to us the four-year curriculum, but they won't start dual eligible classes till their junior year, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. They will start dual enrollment classes their junior year. And then they will have an AVID elective course that will be a year-long embedded course. Uh, AVID one through four, so one for each year. And that course will further reinforce the, uh, AVID's core principles of writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and critical reading. So they have that support along with the higher rigor of coursework all year long in each of the four years.
Um, the other thing would, which would be interesting is see how, hopefully we will have a control cohort that we can compare to. So of the remaining 120 kids that were identified that decided not to participate. were identified that decided not to participate to match their assessment scores through this next four years would be interesting.
Sure. And one thing I'll add is in speaking to some of the parents in the application that came in this past or this week, the mother, she received the email, but she found it in her trash or her junk mail. And she said, I was just so embarrassed. And one parent I talked to, she said that she got my voicemail because I called and said, hey, you know, your child filled out the application. We didn't get an interview time set up. And she said, well, when I thought, when I heard a college was calling from a fourteen year old, I thought it was spam and I deleted it. So that once again has it reinforces that challenge that we face with not being able to talk to people in person and them not really knowing because you get so many spam calls, you know, many of us do. So you you wonder, you know, am I filtering this? Is this something real? Is this what is this? Who is this person? Many of them have never gotten a chance to meet me in person. So I think we'll get some more that come in maybe this week. And we still have some spots available. We have about six spots available. So we may be able to fill those before we finalize that schedule at the end of by the end of this month.
And I don't want to speak for the whole board, but I think maximizing that class, if we have capacity for thirty is important because again, we're we're pouring resources into this. So again, we want to maximize the impact of this.
Sure.
Board, any other questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Basket, thank you so much. That was wonderful. We just really look forward to that. Let's give him a big round of applause.
Thank you.
And I just want to say for the record that our next board meeting is May nineteenth and we want to reassure the community that this board is looking to the future. We are working with Dr. Little, his staff and our teachers and our entire staff to get ready for August. We have every intention of getting back to the new normal. And this board is going to work towards that. And we're going to follow the guidance of our governor and CDC. But our goal is to get our children educated. And we just want to assure you with that, that as on the May nineteenth meeting, we are going to hit the road running. Dr. Little knows that and we're going forward. So just I know we've had some comments from parents asking what all we're going to be doing for the future. We don't know exactly because we've got to see how everything plays out. But I can assure you, this board is working hard. And we're going to make sure your children get educated. I can't stress enough how much we appreciate all of our teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week. They've just done so much this year, but especially these last six weeks. And we just truly appreciate them. We're looking forward to spending time with our seniors. My neighborhood is covered with senior signs. So that's been fun to watch those pop up. And on a personal note, if Josh and Mary Beth and her team, we just want to thank you guys for making this work. Tonight has been great. And we just really appreciate all the work you guys are doing to make these meetings come together in this new normal. So anyway, with that, let's we are going to adjourn. Ten point O is adjourned. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Oswald. All in favor, please stand up and thank you. And we will see everybody on May nineteenth.